For May 11th, 2009. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask for any public comment on any item not listed on the agenda for this evening. And seeing none, we'll move forward to adoption of planning commission meeting minutes of September 22nd and November 24th of '08. Any...
Did you find any...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah. The minutes say that Commissioner Paul Carterstein arrived late.
I see that.
I was not, I was not in the building.
Well, you were really...
I was in Sun Valley, Idaho at the annual meeting of the Pacific State Marine Issues Committee.
Well, you didn't get till the last meeting, so that was why.
So you were really late.
So...
Let's just remove him off that then.
No, this is 11:24.
That was on September 22nd.
22nd.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, Dan?
November 24th, this was the one about the standalone coffee shop with ancillary drive, and there were some comments here near the bottom.
Page.
Yeah, let me look here, let me see, it's page, page.
At the very bottom.
Yeah, at the very bottom, of page one.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, right about halfway, it just talks about the, and so I think, just want to kind of reword this, asked about the left turn lane out of the drive-through in site distance. Opinion, this mixed-use project, yeah, mixed-use project demonstrated nicely what needed to happen along Malala to engage the street with parking in the back. And I guess the part that I'm having a problem with is next, aside from some traffic issues, he felt the project was well-done and would support it. Well, yeah, actually, we talked through it, I just want to clarify this one because it just kind of doesn't sound very good, if you've got traffic issues. But I remember our discussion was about the egress coming out, and that we thought at first initially that maybe it should only be a right-hand turn, but actually, the traffic report indicated that making a left turnout is actually okay. What we decided was that we would have them look at it, review it for the next couple of years. Is that what you guys thought?
That is correct.
That it would be monitored.
Monitor.
It'd be monitored for the next two years to see if there's any collisions with the left turnout, so.
Okay.
However that wants to get worded, it's all yours. Other than that, that's it.
Okay, so we'll put monitoring, some statement on monitoring, on the traffic, on that. Any, anything else? Our proofreader? Commissioner Dunn? No? Nothing? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that? We'll do those both at the same time, I think.
So moved.
Okay, motion to approve...
I would be abstaining from the approving the minutes from the 22nd of September.
Okay, let's do them individually then. So if you don't mind, we'll do them individually.
To approve the September minutes.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? Tony, you will call, roll.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois?
Aye.
Chairperson Powell?
Aye.
Okay, that passed. Now, the November minutes of 11:24. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval with the condition of kind of rewriting that sentence as I indicated.
And second. And second. Tony?
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois?
Aye.
Chairperson Powell?
Aye. Okay, thank you very much, and let's move on next to CP 0901, our hearing, and we have some new faces in the audience, so I think I need to read my legal information, Tony, do I not? Would that be beneficial?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, I will. "A staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for this application. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law and Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing, or before you speak. All letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence, so that the city and all parties can respond to the issue, will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon revised statutes 197-796 requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in circuit court." I'll ask again if there's any ex parte contact, contacts, conflict of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare, considering Commissioner Dunn was not here last time.
Do I have to repeat the ones that I said the first time?
No, you're under that.
Okay, good.
Anything else? Okay. All right, Tony, with staff?
Thank you, Chairperson Powell, you being commissioners. So tonight, you received the memorandum from, from staff requesting the continuance to the June 8th, 2009 hearing. In that memorandum, we also included in as attachment one, the exhibits that were entered into the record at the April 27th meeting. They include the letter from the Historic Review Board, and then, we didn't print out the whole PowerPoint, but we do have the DVD of the PowerPoint on file at City Hall if anybody would like to come and see that. We also included in, into the record, an email from Ms. Roth that went through Mr. Gifford to Chairperson Powell, just put it in the record since he did receive that communication, and as far as I'm aware, did not respond and just forwarded it on to staff, and we've entered in the record for everybody to be able to consider. I'd just like to point out, you know, there was some, at the April 27th hearing, we knew we were going to have a continuance, we thought we were going to continue it to May 11th when that commission report was written and sent out, and as you may recall, Public Works requested even a little bit more time to be able to respond to the questions that they received. So at that April meeting, we knew we were going to be continuing this to the June 8th hearing date, but just because we had already put out a memo saying continue to May 11th is why we continued it tonight, and we are recommending that continuance with the record open to that June 8th, 2009 hearing. After you do allow any time for anyone who came tonight who wishes to speak and ask questions, and then if commissioners do have questions, certainly we'd be, we'd be happy to take them. Mr. Lewis from Public Works is here, as well as myself could probably help with trying to answer any questions, or at least get them down if there are any, before we do continue it with the record open to the June 8th hearing.
Okay, good. Is, John, are you, do you need to make any staff presentation from your perspective as an applicant at this point? Okay. Okay, no problem, we'll, we'll just go ahead and open it up to public hearing at this point. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak for, against, or neither, either, feel free to come forward. Do you have anything written?
I do receive any requests.
Okay, so no one wants to speak? Okay, well, then we can move forward, and we'll close the public, or not close the public hearing, we're going to move this forward back to the commission here for discussion. Any questions of the commission at this time? If not, then how about a motion to continue this until, I'm sorry, Tony, you said the 11th?
June 8th.
June 8th, I'm sorry.
Monday. Oh, now, I was just gonna clarify, you know, there were some questions about the mailings that went out. Tomorrow morning, we're gonna rerun all the mailings with a little wider circle around the property and remail those, just to alleviate any concerns, as well as to clarify when the next hearing is. We didn't mail out earlier just because of this. Didn't want folks coming tonight to know is this gonna be continued, and then go to the, wait till the next hearing when a lot of more information is probably to be presented, so.
Good idea.
We will be remailing those notices.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dan, you had a question?
So, there's still public comment?
Oh, sure. No, we're not closing it. We're just moving it forward to the next commission, and nobody wanted to speak, so I assume there's no questions at this time.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Come, yeah, come on, come, come forward and give us your name and city of residence, and then you can ask the question.
Paula Blackwell at 306 South Center Street. My concern is, I've talked to Tony, and I still have a concern about the amount of traffic going by the Center Street access to John Adams, and we've kind of talked about some ideas. What I'm not quite sure about is, just talking about the ideas, does that then go into a proposal and a plan before things get approved, or does it get approved and then everything, all the details get worked out later, or how does that go?
That's a good question. Tony, you can answer that probably.
Yeah, I think at this point, Public Works has gone back and they're redoing their traffic counts on the site, so there has not been any decision or proposal made at this time for staff to review, you know? The proposal right now is, as submitted, is that they would take access from John Adams and Center Street, but, you know, they received several questions from the neighbors that Public Works is addressing, they're redoing their traffic counts, and when they come back in addressing those, those questions, we'll look at the application to see in what ways it's been amended. Ms. Blackwell's on record with what her question is, and at this point, there is no decision made.
Okay, so to answer your question, it will, if there's going to be a change or anything, it will be on the, at the next hearing, and that, anything you got, any of you guys have discussed, assuming it gets to John and it changes, it'll come up then, and you're welcome to discuss that then and answer any questions, and you'll get it seven days before the meeting. It's available seven days before the meeting. If you want it via email, it's on the website typically seven days before, on the city website, and you can download it, just under the planning commission header, so it's easy to get to.
Okay.
You'll be able to read through all that.
Okay.
Okay? Denise, did you want to speak, or?
Nope.
Okay, all right, very good. Just saw you come in, thought you'd ask.
We're just here to keep an eye on you five, so.
Watching the process.
That's our job.
Very good.
Our job, we can pay you the big bucks for this.
Very good. Okay, so...
So you guys want to drag this out for like another two, three hours?
We could, if they really want to listen.
If they really do want to listen.
So I'll, I'll move to continue the hearing until June 8th.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue to June 8th. Tony, you will call, roll, please.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois?
Aye.
Chairperson Powell?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, at that time, at this time, if there are no other issues to be discussed in the planning commission, we will close the hearing and move into a work session where we will discuss planning commission goals and objectives.
All right. So after our meeting in April, we had revisited the, the planning commission goals and objectives that we, that we had in a draft form for 2005, 2007, and we started to walk through and kind of identify some of them that had been met, or some that we would like to add to or expand upon, or if we wanted to just delete them. We started, we started that process. And at that meeting, I had given you our old commission goals, as well as the city commission goals for 2009, and so we were gonna then come back tonight and kind of work through that a little bit more, and see if anybody had additions that they wanted to make after having an opportunity to sit down and think about it for, for a couple of weeks. So I put on your dais, I just kind of, I cleaned up the draft that we had previously, and then added in some of the notes that I had, specifically, kind of the role in number one there, creating that link between the planning commission and the urban renewal commission. You know, that, you know, and this is probably a question that should be brought up with the city commission, but, you know, is there a role for a planning commission member on the urban renewal commission? I'm not sure we've ever talked about that.
We haven't. Well, we did many years ago, but we haven't in the most recent, my recent memory, but years ago, that was, we did have someone from the planning commission.
Right, and so I guess that's, you know, one area where, you know, it's probably worth further dialogue with the commission if that's something the planning commission's interested in being involved with, or seeing what opportunities there are to be involved, and what direction the commission, urban renewal commission would like to see from the planning commission, and how that melds with what we're kind of envisioning your role being as we're, as we're creating this, this objective.
Well, and to go one step further, and this is what I wanted to bring up, and you just led right into it, but it seems as though we don't get a lot of visibility into metro or the county as well, and, and you know, there's, when you talk to, when you listen to the city commission at their meetings, they, they all are doing five things, and trying to, you know, be metro representatives and Cat, and Clarkamas County representatives, and I think that's fine, but none of them have, I mean, are really involved in the land use side, and I think, I think that's a critical piece, especially in metro with what's happening. We, we end up seeing it after that's been discussed, and it, that, it came up, and the reason I bring it up is because in that meeting we just had with them, that planning meeting, the mayor and Daphne and Doug all had intimate knowledge...
Right.
...of, of all this planning, that we don't have any knowledge.
I, and I had the same thoughts, and, but my one, one of my thoughts was, well, we have a little bit of a disconnect with us and the city commission, and we'll whip that through with our, our work meetings, but maybe we need to work that as well. I mean, I can understand, they're gonna appoint their representative because they're the ultimate, they have to decide, but I had the same thoughts, it's like, after we, it leaves our desk, we kind of never see it again.
And we should be, if we're planning, we should be five years ahead of them, not five years behind them, and so I think that's worth talking about. I think maybe being a representative on metro, or, you know, easy to say, but, but I think that's something that we should at least consider in the future.
Wouldn't that cause certain ex parte contact issues when, when things would come before the planning commission, if, if one of the commissioners had additional knowledge that was related to goings-on at metro or goings-on at the county, that could influence a decision? I mean, how, I, not that, not that I'm against the idea, but just wondering how, how we deal with that.
You know, probably the same way we would deal with any ex parte contact or conflict, you know, you just need to disclose it, you know, and if, if you can't, if you feel like, you know, here's the approval criteria, and if you can't make a judgment based on those, you should probably recuse yourself from that. So it's, you know, it's really, especially, you know, I'm trying to think as well, you know, most of the, you know, urban growth boundary expansion isn't necessarily a land use decision, so you're not, and if it is, you know, trying to think how we did the last one, because it was more of a recommendation from the planning commission.
Right.
It wasn't an actual land use application where you have this quasi-judicial hearing process with, it's more, it not, it was more of a legislative type of an action...
Yeah.
...in which you can have those ex parte contacts, and they don't dismiss you from being able to make a decision, so.
Perhaps it's just as simple as at the end of a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Get an update.
We have an update, yeah.
Just kind of the committee updates.
The chair would ask the person who's representing to give an update on the last meeting, and therefore, all of us would be informed and have pretty much the same information as the person who is representing.
Right, just like, just like the city commission, I mean, that's what they do, and they also have to, they also could have bias as well, so. I, I, I think it's something we need to look a little broader at, and, and as planners, I mean, if we truly put ourselves in that role, I think as planners, we need to be ahead of the curve and, and be recommending things that are, make sense for this community.
And I'm not so worried about the metro, because those are really broad-based policy statements that come out, they're not necessarily project or property owner-specific. Very, very rarely do you get in a situation where you're talking about one property owner who potentially you might see in a land use application. There, you know, it's more, you know, nature and neighborhood goals, or, you know, this larger urban rural reserve areas where you're not saying tax lot 500...
Right.
...we're looking specifically at. So I'm a little, I'm comfortable in that sense that we, we can deal with that.
Good.
It, I think, just think the long-term vision looks, is, is great, I mean, especially even at the state level. You know, when you know Amtrak, or they're looking at, at bringing in light rail, it would be nice to know that when we're looking at our long-term plans, and if we feel comfortable that we are talking to our congressman and, or whoever, and, and we feel like that's something that's being approached, we need to look at that long-term, and it would help us in our long-term planning. I'll leave it alone at that, but that's something I think we ought to include in this somehow.
And I guess, just starting over real quick, on 1A, where we talk about city services, particularly police and fire, do you want fire left in there even though we've, we've done the fire annexation?
Well, I mean, you know, what they do, I mean, I guess, again, from a, from a, from a high-level view, I think they should be.
Okay.
From a strategic, they do still give opinions. We still send out requests for their opinion, so I, I think that should be included.
Okay.
That's my opinion, I don't know.
I agree.
I agree. Yeah.
And then, you want to what, add school board?
Yeah, you knew where I was going.
Didn't see that coming. Certainly, it's up to, what, up to the...
Well, that's true, I mean, it would be, it would be refreshing to be able to have that relationship with a school board.
You know, we talk about the relationships that we want to have with our other city advisory groups, not that the, obviously, the, the school board's a separate entity, but, you know, if there's that outreach to coordinate with them, you know, maybe that's something we should add as one of our goals.
Actually, I, I would like to throw that out there, I mean, obviously, it was something I hammered on quite a bit, but something I would like to throw, I mean, we're gonna single out police and fire, those are two very important functions and services, but so are schools, and I would propose adding that, I guess, at this time.
I, I think it's probably a good idea, and then I think it'd be probably incumbent upon us to go to them at, at one of their meetings and talk to them about our goal, and how we'd like to build that relationship, and, and try and work something out with the board, with the board.
Well, and, and that gets to another, further down points, I mean, besides just singling out the urban renewal committee, and then another one, the city commission, maybe we can add, and other committees, something as appropriate so that we can get to that function.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think these are our goals, so we can pretty much do what we want to do, I mean, as long as it doesn't impinge on the cities, the cities' goals, commission, the city commission's goals, or, or gets us in a legal situation.
So are we thinking maybe that's under 3B where we're improving the communication, adding another, problem is, it's not really a, it's not a city committee.
No.
Well, we just changed structure to the city, city committees, or city and, well...
Well, I like, maybe broadening 1E, or, or G, either one, create a link between planning commission and committees such as the urban renewal committee, and we could list some out, or, yeah, and I'd say maybe broaden that out, urban renewal committee.
You know, the other one could be six.
That was what I, I was thinking as well.
Number six, where we have increased education and outreach to, you know, I'm not sure if it's outreach to the committees.
Well, maybe change that to communicate, I think, I like the way this is worded one through, on down, but with the schools, it might be better just to talk about communication and, under number six, increased education and communication, or something like that.
Well, I agree that, in addition, but I still feel pretty strongly that in 1A, we should add, and schools, to the police and fire, as something we look at as city services in terms of an urban growth boundary expansion.
Yeah, I...
I mean, it goes, and then...
I know what you're saying, but I don't see it as a city service, it's a separate entity, so we'd have to...
That's the challenge.
Yeah, we'd have to add that as, oh, thanks, Tony.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
That was my halo, I was assuming that.
Why don't you put that light back on you? The spotlight?
Yeah, all of a sudden, it's, wow, it's got a halo.
Well, I mean, it's, two ways you could look at that sentence, city services very strictly as city services the city provides, or, I mean, maybe, Tony, there's a way we can word it as broader, but...
Isn't it the annexation code that we look at that has the list of, of city services enumerated?
Correct.
And you probably have that list memorized, it does include schools.
It does include schools, yes, and that's why we send a comment form to Oregon City School District as the responsible, possible jurisdiction to provide those comments.
So are you just saying that, you know, we should be consistent, use that same list?
Yeah, yeah, well, and I, and I hear where he's saying is because we don't provide that, because a separate entity provides that, but I think in this goals and objectives structure, we can say it in a sense that you just described, because it is one of the things that we need to make sure that services are there regardless of who's providing them, when we look at those things. That's my thought.
Yeah, I'm, I'm finding it a way.
Well, I understand where you're headed with that, I'm just trying to figure out what, from a, from a, you know, from our ability to do it, you know, that's where I want to, I think...
We're, we're focused on 1A at this point, right?
Yeah.
That's the topic, and...
Yeah.
The urban growth boundary expansion decisions, what's the timeline on those, Tony? Are those five-year deals or 20-year deals?
Uh, we are, we are required to review currently every five years, making sure we provide 20 years' worth of available lands.
And my sense is that maybe we don't know today enough about the schools to make growth boundary decisions based on, you know, existing infrastructure, the, the capacity of the existing infrastructure shouldn't be the basis for making a decision about what, what the boundary of the city should look like in 20 years, and so I'm, I, that's one argument that one could make for not getting down to the specific language that we actually use in our annexation code.
No, I hear that, I hear that, I just, I just think we need to think that out that long, in terms of that service as well. I mean, it's just, if we're gonna single out police and fire, for me, schools are as important, at least as important, if not more, and, and I think this is a goal and a very general discussion when we're taking a look at urban growth boundary expansions. It was frustrating for me, the, the constraints that we do have once we get into the process, but I don't think we have to constrain ourselves in, in professing our goals and objectives. I think we can, to the extent that, that we can, we can put it in there.
Is this, can I ask a question? Is this a common problem, schools and the local jurisdictions, being so separated? Or are we unique? I, I have no idea.
It's gotta be common.
Is it just common? They're over here, and...
I could, I could look into that, I, I haven't heard.
Just disconnect, yeah, I'd just like to get some information on.
What the relationship is.
If somebody, yeah, if there's better, if, let's put it this way, if there's better relationships in some community, how do they do it? Why, you know, and how, what can we learn from it?
Well, you know, if you think about, if, if we had a better link of communication, if, if that last discussion we had when we talked about the growth area in that Park Place area, if they knew that, do you think they would close that school? I, I don't know, but I mean, that's the discussion that we need to have, and I mean, if we're planning on putting X people up into that area, I mean, why in the world would you want to close a school and get rid of the school, if you'd have to just build another one to be able to meet those requirements? But maybe that's not a ten, I mean, that's not a five-year goal.
I think they're thinking mothball in it, not distracted.
Well, it's just, that's just an example, that's just an example.
But I guess, in my hypothetical question is, how does that impact your decision-making now?
No.
We have absolutely no control over the decision of that school, so here's where I just, I, I can certainly see adding it as a communication, we want to include you in our master planning process, we want to be a part of yours in any way we can help you, you know, we'll, we'll send you all the information that we have, you know, here's where we're looking at, you know, you should be on, we should, we would like a member, you should be on, we would like a member, a representative to be on our urban, you know, our urban growth boundary expansion committee, you know, when we do those things, or our concept planning process. But then when it comes down to, if someone comes in with an application for annexation and the school district has decided to shut Park Place, what, other than noting it, and if they say, "Well, yes, we've decided to shut that school, but we're going to accommodate them at this school," it's not a reason for denial. So I'm not sure where it gets you, that's the one, that's the thing we keep tripping over on this.
Well, but, but they're still showing our ability to provide that service, and that's all, and we would still make our decision based on that discussion, and that's why I still think it's worthy to state it in this goal.
I guess--
You're still making your decision based on that ability, and they're going to come back and tell us how they're going to do it, we have no say in how. I still want to be able to have that conversation, I still want to base my decision on their ability as they tell us that they can handle that or not.
And the only problem we run into is we don't get a response.
Right, which, that's another issue.
Going back to the first point, yeah, it's probably the communication system broke down somewhere, maybe it's all across America, I don't know, maybe it's just here, but let's fix this one, so that we can-- Is our fire service, though, contracted by the city to Clockwisp County?
Correct.
So it's a city responsibility?
Yeah, correct.
And the city can control that, and the voters of the city can use the ballot box to establish their priorities.
And more specifically, they give the city that function, whereas we give that, the function of running the schools to a school district entity.
Right, and that's why I'd like to keep them separate, because the city has no authority over the school district.
Now, I understand that.
The voters that make decisions, make decisions for the city, and they also make decisions for the school district, and I think to intermingle those two, those two entities in our goals is just going to trip us up.
And that's been the hard part that staff has had, because we can control water, sewer, roads, police, fire, parks, schools is one where we just have no ability to make a change.
But, at the same time, I understand that at the decision level, absolutely, but at a goal level, not so much, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's more at a higher level, like, let's, clearly, that's the position that they take, they have no response, but what we're saying, what you're saying, what I'm saying is, is why does it have to be that, why can't we talk about this?
Right, let's set a goal to do that.
It's more of an aspiration.
But is now what--
That's what the goal is.
I guess that's what we're questioning, though, is that, do we put it in the increased education and communication section in number 6, or do we put it under A where it says urban growth boundary expansion decisions?
That's too specific.
Or, well, in my opinion, it's not.
I understand what you're saying, I, you know, I think we all, I don't know, maybe I'm speaking, I, it seems that we're all saying that we want to involve, be involved more with those, with the school district, and I think it fits very well in 6. I'm not as convinced that it's very, fits quite as well in 1, I do understand completely what you're saying.
Well, I am saying further that we should use it as a criteria for our goals, but at the end of the day, can we, is the question, but that isn't what we have to ask, I don't think, right here.
Well, but we want, when we want our goals, we want some, the goals to be something that we are achievable, and if we, if it's not something that we can participate in or use, then it's not achievable, and then I wouldn't recommend that. But if it's in increased education and outreach, that's perfect, that's perfect.
Well, yeah, and if you change outreach, well, education, and input, too, outreach and input, and so, I guess I feel it would fit under that better than under 1A, yeah, because we have no ability to control that.
Well, we have the ability to base our decision, what it says is we're going to base our urban growth boundary decisions on X, Y, and Z.
Right, and some of those--
We can base our decisions on anything, whether they provide X, Y, and Z is the question.
Right, and if we needed to, we could adjust police, fire, water, et cetera, we can't adjust schools, schools basically are going to react to whatever comes down in the next, let's face it, 10, 10 years, it's not going to happen right away.
Right.
So, I think the important thing is that we get input from the schools and that we communicate with schools, and I think by doing that--
I'm not going to fall on my sword on this, I guess at the end of the day, I'm still, in the future, going to look at urban growth boundary decisions, for me personally, with that as one of the other criterias in mind, maybe I shouldn't be saying that, I don't know, but, I mean, one of the things besides police and fire, when they say, "Can we expand into this area?" I'm going to be saying, "Well, what do you think as a school district before I do that?" That's all I'm hearing that said, but I'm not--
And the question is, if you don't get a response?
That, then we didn't meet our goal, but so be it, at least our goal was to try and utilize that as one of the criterion, I think it's worthy of doing, trying to do that.
Right, I think--
You know, can we tweak 6 to say--
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I'm not falling on my sword on this one.
And input or communication, and then we'll talk about the Oregon City School District and wanting to get their input on urban growth boundary expansion, future growth areas, you know, enroll, you know, and I'll make it very broad-based, but including there that we want to not only communicate with them in their planning process, in our planning process, but to facilitate that communication on our land use applications to make our decision-making easier.
Well, a good example is the meeting we just had with the city commission in the work session, and that, we're talking about huge expansions, and we had no representation from the Stewo district at all. Now, were they made aware of it? I don't know, probably, everybody else was, so, you know, I think that's where that outreach and the communication has to be, is, you know, they should be, they should have been involved to see that big square that we all saw and said, "Is this a--
How?
Give us your idea, what do you think, what do you guys think? Is it better for you to open up in Beaver Creek, or is it better for you to open up in Park Place, or give us your thoughts?"
There's got to be a way to do that.
Give us your thought, well, it is, just invite them and let them comment.
No, 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 I mean to put it into some form of statute to compel them to be involved in that process.
Well, we got to talk to the senate, state, the state representatives or the--
We're on the wrong rung for that directive.
Yeah, I agree with you, Chris, I agree with you.
This is where it starts, I'm telling you, Tony.
Okay, you're going to go bottom up? Okay, well, that's, I think that's a clear message.
Okay, I'll work on that language.
Well, is our goal to approve these tonight, though, Tony?
We can, no.
Was that your goal?
No, because we, you know, I had given you guys--
Okay, because I don't want to hold it up over that.
No, we're supposed to, this is our input time, this is where we're--
Because I kind of dropped it onto you at the meeting last time.
My understanding, I mean, my guess would be that we want to go and present this to the city commission, you know, either as a group or whatever, and present our planning goals.
Assuming we really are serious about 1E. Or no 1G, sir.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I, this is the first time I've seen this, so I guess I'm just reading through a review of the annexation process and identifying prioritized lands to be annexed in the city, so we're giving recommendations, or--
What we, I believe it was Canby went through and they had their areas that were outside the city limits, and they prioritized them.
Canby, back on track.
You know, maybe they were easily accessed, you know, could be gravity-fed by sewer, were surrounded on three sides, had good access to transportation, the land was flat, so that was a high priority for easy urbanization upon annexation, or it was an industrial area or an employment area, so that received a higher designation. You know, I think what we kind of grappled with was, okay, if it's, let's say, A's the best, D's the worst, it's a D, how does that play into your approval criteria for an annexation? How does this, if we go through and prioritize these lands, how do those priority rankings, what do they mean when someone comes in for an application? And, you know, I think if we go down this road, we're going to have to get, I'd like to get the attorney involved to say, "Okay, if we go through and rank these in some type of a situation, do we need to change our code to accommodate, you know, okay, it's a D land, but they've met one, two, they've met these three things, so we can appro," you know, it gets difficult of what do you do once you prioritize it, and someone who's not on the top half or top third, what do you do with their land, then? Is it, "Sorry, we prioritized you too low, so come back in five years," or, you know, there's got to be a rationale for the denial, or for what this prioritization is going to do for you, there's no reason to go through this process if we can't utilize it.
Right, exactly, it's just, it's pointless, so, yeah.
It seems like it should just be yes or no, just keep it clean, yes or no, but, just like anything, that there is another contingency in there for the, that's what we do all the time here, you know, because it's not all straight, clear, you got to sort of make a judgment on things, and so maybe it's something, set up something like that.
Well, I mean, isn't this what we just did with Metro? I mean, and the county, that's exactly what we just did, we just went through--
But in a very expedited fashion, and this is, this is made me thinking about it in a longer term sense.
Exactly, right.
That's what I was thinking.
But that's just what we did.
What are our urban reserve areas, and what do we think are the best? But I had never thought about to the next step of, once we rank them, do we have to utilize that ranking?
Right, right, what are you doing?
Is it possible that system development charges could be based on that ranking? So, for example, if we had an area that was, you know, ranked a level D, level D meant that it's going to be difficult to provide infrastructure, therefore, you know, we can target, you know, additional fees for that area if you're going to develop there first?
And I think if we were going to do that, we would have to have done it through the concept planning process, like, what we did is we did our concept plans for Park Place and Beaver Creek, and we came up with our list for transportation improvements that were necessary, and then Nancy went through and updated our system development charges for the city based on those projects in those areas, so that they were spread out amongst the whole city. Other jurisdictions have prorated SDCs, instead of taking those transportation costs and incorporating them into a one SDC that's charged for your new, your single-family home or your commercial, whether you build it in Park Place, Beaver Creek, or South End, or downtown, the SDC's always the same, they've gone and said, "Okay, this is the concept planning area," and their SDC is going to be $12,000, whereas if you're in the old part of the town or existing developments, you know, it's $10,000. So ours is set up where it's, the costs are spread throughout the whole city, they're not specific to a certain area, so that would, that would be going back and revisiting our SDC methodology.
So, let's see, if we were going to look at areas that were adjacent to current city boundaries and identify the areas that we would hope could be annexed in the future, could we, could we, you know, put them in sector 1, 2, 3, and 4, and say, before we take any new annexations, we want to see concept plans for these areas? Can we draw, can we draw a border, can we make an overlay that says, "No annexations in this area until the concept planning's done"?
We could, yeah, you know, there's not too many areas left, you know, we've got Beaver Creek, we've got Park Place, so then we still have the, the South End, obviously, is outstanding still for a concept plan to be done. So, I mean, I know where you're going in terms of wanting that concept plan, but, you know, we've, there's not a whole lot of areas that we haven't addressed, you know, we really hadn't expanded our UGB in quite a while, until we did 2002, and then we did the two concept plans for those areas, and we included areas that were already in the, in our urban growth boundary. So we actually grabbed properties that, you know, had been in our UGB for years prior, and we just included them in the concept plan to account for them, so--
So, if, it's our, I guess our code talks about the cherry stems and how land has to be contiguous for us to bring it in, and then we already have the areas that are to be concept planned identified, I guess I'm wondering what's going to be the purpose of trying to review the annexation process and identifying prioritized lands?
That's a good question.
I know that there's language in the concept, or in the city's master plan, I think, that says that we, that we would identify parcels of the city for annexation, is that where I recall seeing it? I think it, the city's, I believe it's the city's master plan, and, you know, that's come up as a subjective questions during different annexation proceedings, and we talk about it and move forward, and I think in the back of my mind, there is always this idea of, well, we got these little islands in the city, or these little areas of the city, these little creeks and valleys that tend to be the bulk of the smaller annexations, why doesn't the city put together a marketing campaign and a ballot issue to say, "Let's just, let's take all these in now because it makes a lot of sense." I mean, is that where we're going out, going when we talk about prioritizing these lands to be annexed into the city?
I think that, like I said, the original intent was, you know, we had employment lands, you know, should that be a priority for us to get in, and then we had, you know, some low, low-density residential along South End Road with a creek through it, is that really a high priority? You know, I think, I think we were just looking at where we'd like to kind of target immediate growth to accommodate needs in the city, but then, you know, the next step is, what does it mean?
Right.
Well, and when we originally, when this was originally, this discussion we started, it was before we had these concept plans, I mean, this is, we've done a lot of work to get to this point, so, you know, it may be moot point, it may be--
Well, I mean, in the same way that the city's, the city commission's goals, as they're listed on the chart behind us, they're, they're not really work plans, to me, they're more of value statements, or, you know, high-level aspirations.
Right.
And I think for the planning commission to have a list that, for example, says that we value employment lands higher than we value, you know, 100-unit subdivisions of the classical design higher than we value, you know, the one-off tract annexation, if we had a list of things like that, I think it would be useful for guiding our decisions as, especially the legislative decisions, where we get to have some bias, and it, I think shows, you know, it could actually provide some basis for a discussion with the city commission, so that the city commission would know what we're thinking about in terms of planning. But it would seem that you would want to have some umbrella language over a list of things like that, because to have a list of aspirations, you need to have a context that says, "We're looking out 10, 15, you know, 50 years," and looking out 10, 15 to 50 years, we're saying that we want to have a place where people can work, first of all, without having to drive all over the place, so provide a context for those things, but I don't know, I don't know if that fits into this discussion of prioritizing lands, it seems like it's a higher-level discussion.
And, you know, in building on that is how this prioritization works into the existing approval criteria for annexations, maybe it's a bigger question of, maybe we should look at the annexation code and see if it's saying what we want it to say, and this prioritization may come out of that, you know?
Right.
We might not be asking the same, the right questions in the approval criteria.
Yeah, to me, the review of the annexation process is something well within our realm, the rest of that, to identify and prioritize, just, I don't know, I don't feel comfortable that that's kind of our area to deal with, maybe, I don't know, that's--
You know, the one, you know, the one danger is you're going into it without all the information, you know, you're pretty much going to base it off of what the comp plan designation is for their general location, you know, we don't have detailed, I mean, we can give you anecdotal evidence of this intersection is kind of functioning like this, so that, you know, that'd be the one drawback to prioritizing land without going out and looking at them all, you know, to do it correctly, you'd probably want to go out and do a site visit, you know, are there riparian areas out there, are there slide areas out there, and those are things that you get when an application comes in because the applicant's doing that detailed work, we wouldn't be able to do that in this prioritization, you know, it would be very general.
That's right, but in the meantime, this just gives us a simple opportunity to take a broad look at various areas, because there's nothing in between, but once you get that application, we get the very specifics, but we haven't had the opportunity to sit back and take a look at where we think as a planning commission or city we should be going, and we can start those conversations, also might help politically in some areas as well, if we've already started the conversations and taken a look at opportunities for growth before it hits the very political point when it is, when an application's been filed. That's kind of the way I was looking at this, is taking a look at our annexation process, taking a look at what's out there and around, and being able to have those conversations before it hits that formal point of application, that was kind of my thought on that.
Do we want to--
And, and in real general--
Want to start with just a broad statement of, "We're going to look at the process and the existing approval language," and--
Yeah, the prioritized language is where, what do we do with that, it kind of gets sticky, I think.
Well, again, historically, I think it was because we were getting all these one-up annexations, and that's why we--
That's what I didn't like.
Right, and that's why we wanted to prioritize and say, "Well, no, you're not going, we're not going to do that, we're going to do this," and that's how this hall started, so, again, and it's probably moot point now, of what, we've done what, we've done what we said we're going to do through code, we've done, we've taken care of most of those problems. We don't allow cherry stuff, we don't allow a lot of these--
Yeah, so, you know, we've kind of piecemealed--
Yeah.
--this, this kind of policy statement, you know, "We want you contiguous," you know, "We want, we don't want these cherry stuff," you know, so we're kind of moving that direction a little bit through the comp plan amendment, but, yeah, I think it might be helpful to go back and look at the approval criteria.
Yeah, I think that's, I think we--
Beginning of the thought so far.
Yeah, I think the idea of reviewing the process is good, I think that's something we should do.
Okay, I'm just going to leave it pretty general, wide open, you know, we're going to review the process, the approval criteria for annexations, and we'll just leave it at that.
Okay, good.
Okay, D, development of concept plans for--
Okay, D, development of concept plans for urban growth. What, what was meant by that?
Well, we've got South End still outstanding, that we need to do a concept plan for.
So we as in?
The city.
The city.
Yes. So that we, I should probably...
So how do we as the planning commission expedite that? Is that, I guess I'm not sure why that's in there.
It's...
Are we saying, do it?
We have, we have to do it. When we did our, when we, we took in Park Place, Beaver Creek, and South End as part of the urban growth boundary expansion in 2002, I believe?
Yeah, it's pretty outstanding. But we're the body that has to approve it and send it out.
Right, right, but I mean...
So we got to develop it.
We need to, you know, it's, it's a timing and a financial investment that the city is difficult to make right now. It, I think we need to keep it on here because we need to do it. The, you know, it's going to be the same process as we did for both Park Place and Beaver Creek. You know, you're talking upwards of probably $600,000 to $700,000 for those concept plans. Now, we were, we're hoping South End will be a little bit easier, but you've still got some major transportation and land use issues out there to deal with. So it's, it hasn't been budgeted in, in, in our work plan yet. I think it's just, we need to keep it on the radar. You know, if it's something we want to try and prioritize, I think we need to have a conversation with Mr. Drantlaw.
Is there a clock ticking?
Yes.
On that?
Yeah, we, we've asked for an extension.
Okay.
Because we, you know, just based on our size, getting those two, those two plans took over a year longer than we thought they would.
Is that to Metro that we have to?
Correct. Yeah. So, you know, I should probably change that of, you know, kind, development of concept plan for South End urban growth boundary expansion area, since we have accomplished two out of the three to this point. You know, then what comes along with that is additional implementing code, you know, SDC updates for all the projects that are going to become new, TSP update. So, there's, there's a lot to it, and there's quite a big investment, and it's just difficult to budget right now to do, even with the grant that we do receive from, that we did receive. We received a Metro grant for the excise tax for Park Place, and we received an ODOT grant for Beaver Creek Road, which we would be going out again for, but just investments a lot. We can certainly come back with a better timeline once we have that.
On, on, on D, is, is this an education piece, the first part, use and roll of urban renewal districts? And on identifying areas, isn't that defined though by your, by urban renewal?
Well, that's the point. And, and why that came up is because of, my question was, what do we know about urban renewal to an almost a person? We just don't know enough. And so that was the educational piece.
Okay.
Was teach us, let us get more involved in the understanding of what urban renewal districts are. And then identify areas, the, the thought was, what, when we're at a point where the, we're, we're at a point where, let's say McLaughlin is, it's done everything it can do, rather than just shut down an urban renewal, renewal district, we should, we as the planning commission should be able to say, well, you know, Park Place would be a great place to put an urban renewal district, and that's something we should, we should look at for the next urban renewal district. You know, be able to offer some advice on that. Or the, or the educational opportunity up by the college, you know, in that land.
Okay, so the first part of that is use and roll is more of a, our education.
Yeah.
Which I would agree would be very helpful. And then you're just saying, we as, should have, should be putting some input into where we might want to move.
Right, because traditionally, urban renewal changes with the political wind. And, and that's not good planning.
No.
You know, that's somebody who doesn't, just doesn't particularly like to not pay a tax, does, one, all of a sudden wants to change it. And if you have three votes, it's over. And so...
And I think another part of that, too, could be, you know, once you improve that communication with the urban renewal district and kind of get their vision for that area, you know, we might be coming back and writing code to help implement that vision. I think there's been that disconnect of, we're investing the money, we're collecting the money, we're collecting those funds, and we're giving them to businesses. Now, are these businesses designing, creating the type of building that we're envisioning? And if not, why not? And is that code-related, or is that, you know, I think, you know, so this could go in several directions, not only, you know, here are other areas where these could be, where it would be useful, or here it could be the benefit to these areas if this was an investment to be made, but also the other tract is, you know, is this a sub-area that needs to, you know, a certain design overlay to implement the vision of the urban renewal district? Or what is the vision? You know, is it a certain type of streetscape, a parking pattern, a facade improvement, a certain style? You know, I, I don't know that we've ever had that conversation.
There is, that, that's exactly right. And, and right now, the perception, the perception is that it's a big pot of money that we, that we can lend out and do what we need to do with. I mean, it, you saw when they were trying to give money to the school district to keep a school. I mean, that's fine, that's good discussion to have, but the fact of the matter is, no one really knows, no one knows where these dollars are going, except the urban renewal district, and there's no, there's no involvement from our side of it. And I think it's important that we give that involved, be that involved, and have some discussion. And I think it lends credibility to their program, and, and I don't think they have that today.
Or certainly some task that come out of urban renewal for planning to, to address or to deal with, which, you know, we could be that support role position.
Absolutely.
And so I guess, you know, the more we talk about this, I almost wonder if this is a number six.
That's what I was thinking.
At this stage?
And, and then, and then, actually, E is, is the other half of it. Because identifying areas that say we're urban renewal, essentially, that's E, in my mind, well. I'm not quite sure what that second, what E...
Well, you know, we've got this, we're, we're almost creating a new relationship that doesn't exist today, and I'm not exactly sure what form it's going to take, if any. You know, if urban renewal and city commission says, no, we're fine, we've got it taken care of, I'm not sure, you know, I think that's the end of this conversation, you know?
Well, from a, from a, I guess it is, to some degree.
I mean, from, from, from staff.
Exactly.
Undirected to do that.
Right, exactly.
Right, as citizens of the city, obviously, you have a different position than I do, but if that's the directive that I take, you know, I mean, we'd certainly go and make the case as well as we can. So it, it's kind of wide open, because I'm not exactly sure what our role would be at this point, other than we think that we should investigate having one, and how can we support, direct, contribute to the decisions in your vision.
Well, why don't we have a seat on the urban renewal? That's, I mean, that's the first question. Why, why wouldn't you? Why, why wouldn't you want the planning commission to have a, sit in that position?
And I think the chair should be the one that has to sit in both of you.
Yeah. All those meetings.
We're going to have a new vote for the chair tonight?
Yeah. Well, I can't make it, so guess what? It all goes downhill. I, I don't know the answer to that either, how to, I mean, but I, I think it's definitely worthwhile discussing with them.
So, does maybe this get moved to part six, and we kind of craft, you know, we envision being a part of it, whether that be in a, in, you know, lay out a couple scenarios where we would be supportive and directive and...
So the suggestion is to move D and E from number one to number six?
Well...
I still think we need to identify areas where we can look at urban renewal.
Well, I guess my, my own concern is that, you know, number one is talking about addressing future growth and development issues by developing and implementing long-range plans and policies.
Right.
We're not even sure if we're going to be doing that yet, because we haven't had that conversation yet. So we kind of have to communicate it first. We can always come back, and once we get a directive, you know, it would come out of the communication, it would go into a policy that we're going to do if we're given that direction.
Well, and also, once we're educated on what urban renewal is and does, we may say...
What we want to do.
We may say, yeah, there's no point in us doing this. I mean, I think we, we need to start with, with understanding urban renewal better, and then all of a sudden, the light bulb might go, and we go, holy Moses, there's like three areas that we can immediately think about and start that process. But if we don't know, we'll never know.
Right.
So move them to six, right?
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, that's, that would be a good spot for it.
That was the suggestion that, that Alan made, right?
Yeah, well, D, D and E, well, D is, is an edu, to me, is an education piece.
The use and roll.
And, and E, in a way, I don't know, E is kind of a goal. I mean, that's something we're, we're seeing, we might want to...
But are we going to be able to make a policy before we get educated about it?
Okay, policies and plans. Yeah, you're right.
Well, we could still, you could still do E.
Yeah, create, I mean, create a link. I mean, that could be any, any, any number of things, whether it be a, a seat on the...
And I would argue, why couldn't you do the second part of, of D, assuming, but you could still make it a goal or a policy to identify urban renewal areas, assuming there are some...
You know, you would like some direction from the city commission or urban renewal
district, if that's something they really want you, you know, spending staff time and resources on.
Right. How dynamic are the urban renewal districts? I mean, they don't change very often, is that true?
We have one.
Just one, right?
Downtown, out to 213 roughly. How far, I forget how far up, does it come up?
Goes up to Eastham.
Goes all the way up Seventh.
One block on each side.
One block on the other side, yeah, it's pretty narrow. Yeah. You know, you know, not to, you know, because we're not sure what direction that they would, but, you know, you could see how this all interrelates into, you know, as an annexation policy, or if employment lands are important, you know, is it important enough to give its own urban renewal district, or, you know, SDC funding, or, you know, rebates, or, you know, does the city go into, I mean, these are big policy questions that we just haven't... How do you promote it? This is really something we want, and we're behind, and we've spent the money on these concept plans, and we, you know, we believe in them. How do you make it happen? Or at least provide the best opportunity you can for it, or do you just wait? You know, some people, it's, it's a 20-year plan, we'll wait, we'll wait for year 19, you know? And those are, those are important policy questions. You know, you've only got a finite amount of resources you can invest. You know, you can only handle so many projects at one time, just based on the size of our But those are legitimate questions.
Yeah. Well, so let's move...
Do you want to noodle on that one for a little bit?
Yeah, let's do, why, why don't we, yeah, let's think about that one.
Okay.
That would be D and E regarding urban renewal. The same with F, I mean, you know, they all, who, who is, and I, my question was, who has seen the economic development program?
Right.
And, you know, it's, it's available, if it's not on the website, it should be.
I haven't seen it.
And it's something you should all read, we should all be, you know, reading and I think G is fine.
And I guess if there are areas that anyone's aware of that we're severely lacking. You know, we've, we've updated our historic, Christina's updated our, our new building standards in historic districts and new construction and conservation district. You know, we've got, we're implementing Title 13 for Metro for nature in the neighborhoods. We've updated our steep slopes code. We've updated our flood overlay to be compliant with FEMA's new requirements. So, I'm, nothing's glaring right now that, that fits these, that we've identified. So I'll just leave it at that, unless someone else has concerns of, of, or anything they've read, or when we're reviewing something, if something comes up with our water resource overlay district or something like that. You know, obviously, we still have trees out there, we haven't really addressed that, but I think we've all received the direction on that. So for number two, you know, I was going to, I'm going to do some homework on what other jurisdictions do for any type of a design committee, or what their thresholds are, if there are any. You know, we've, we've got a, as you're well aware, we've got those clear and objective standards of the residential component, which might hamper, you know, some of your expectation on what you can actually do, you know? And I'm not sure, Dan, if you were more concerned about, you know, commercial and office buildings along our residential corridors, or if you're concerned about 35-lot subdivision layouts, you know, we're...
Yeah, 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 no, I know, I know what you mean.
You know, so I wasn't sure if I wanted larger developments of, you know, institutional, commercial, retail, office.
Yeah, I guess, I'll expand on that, because for larger developments, yeah, just, just huge impact projects for our city that are noteworthy, kind of thing, that, so that's one. I think another one are, you know, along our mixed-use corridors, that any node, any corner, important corner, that those four corners get grabbed by design review, because those become little focal points of little communities for, for which great design can kind of spur out from there. And that's the, that's the target.
Yeah.
And so there'd be those, and then also, just important, just, there, there may be, we may need to examine some parts in the city where we just, we, we identify a corner for some reason, or a building or something that, if something gets built there, it's just, you know, there's a view access or something that, you know, I don't, I don't think it has to be everything, but when you get a couple of these things, it can start something, which we desperately need.
Okay.
And, and it'll give, and it'll give clues and cues to the architects coming afterwards as they start to work in that community, that, oh, that, that corner there, you know? So, you know, it's a good start to do something like that, so, yeah. So for larger developments, for nodes, for important corners, all that kind of stuff. I'm not sure, that's probably about it.
The sign code really hasn't changed. You know, we all know that we just want to do something, just want to try and do. So we were going to, you know, I'll be doing some research on, you know, other jurisdictions, you know, how, you know, like I've been down, when I was in Florida, you know, they've got some pretty restrictive signs out on like some of the island, barrier islands out there, of, you know, it's all pedestrian scale. You know, maybe pull some other historic districts and see how they handle them, you know? I mean, probably envisioning two different sign codes based on location. That's kind of my philosophy, is, you know, maybe we start, well, we, if we're going to do it, we should do it all, but I would say, you know, you start with historic signs in a historic neighborhood. I mean, if we really truly want to maintain a historic presence, I think that we need to look at the type of signage we allow in the neighborhood. You know, we've, we've, we've made some mistakes in the past, and they're still there, and we, you know, we may never, ever get rid of them, but, you know, some, some of those old signs that have been around are now become historic as part of, part of that, and that's okay, you know? But when you're putting something new in, you know, neon and all those things, they don't, it doesn't fit. Yeah. Okay. Fever Creek Road, rewriting the code, working on that, to implement the concept plan. The record at Luba has finally been finalized. It was, Luba finally got through, it took us seven months to finalize the record. So the appellate's brief is due this Friday, and then we have 21 days to respond to that brief, and then they set a date for oral argument, so probably look in July, hopefully, to get a decision on the concept plan. And then obviously, Luba is appealable to the Court of Appeals, and then the Supreme Court, if it should go that far. So, starting to move forward again, finally.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Transportation system plan update, Nancy Kay is, is putting that together, so I think we'll definitely want to talk with her, you know, if that's, you know, I'm not, haven't really seen the work plan for what process they're going to be using, if it's just, right now, the technical advisory committee. It is an amendment to the comprehensive plan, so it would need to come through you, but I'm sure you'd like to see it in some type of a work session, a minimum.
Oh, sure.
Prior to, to getting it to understand what's going on. And then we had the, we were, I think we had the direction to look at if we were going to address trees on properties that wanted to be annexed into the city. How we address that.
For scaled-back tree ordinance?
Yeah, very specific scaled-back tree ordinance. Hey, we've got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll have to talk to Pete, too, and see, because I, I haven't been that involved with some of this in terms of the tree work that he's been doing. He's been doing a lot of work for the Tree City USA and the grants and whatnot, so maybe I'll try and get some information from him, and then that might be something we roll into here as well.
Okay.
-of how that relates, or what we need to do, if anything, to-
Right, I mean, to qualify, or-
We certainly-
Well, it seemed to me that, that it might have been too ambitious for, for consideration in, in the large group, and maybe, maybe there's an incremental plan that Pete might think of, that we could look at, but-
Well, I mean, everybody's aware of our interests, so it seems that if there's a process, that we should be involved in that, somewhere along the line, yeah.
It's, it's interesting, because for some reason, I have a feeling that we actually do a pretty good job of trying to work with folks on trees, you know, in terms of, you know, we've got, in my opinion, a pretty aggressive replacement schedule, we've got a tree bank, that, you know, if we can't fit the trees, we're getting money for, you know, we have a pretty aggressive spacing requirement on street trees, I mean, when these trees grow out, I mean, the boulevards are gonna be, in my opinion, pretty amazing, just takes time. So I think we've done a lot, I think we've come quite a long ways in six or seven years from where we were originally. So, yeah, I think the incremental approach, I think, I think we've done a lot more than we kind of, I think we forget what we've accomplished sometimes.
Well, there's no doubt that we have, I mean, we've done a good job with, with new development and things like that, we've definitely cut the trees in there, the things that concern me, and that's why I wanted, is, is these mature trees that we have in city parks, and we have in people's yards, and, I mean, you know, the, when you, it's fine if you, I mean, if you lose it to disease or whatever, the fact of the matter is, in the Carnegie, we lost two big trees, and we've never replaced those trees. The city didn't follow its own rule, so we've never replaced those trees, and if we did follow the rule, we'd have to put 35 trees in there.
Well, for a diseased tree, it's a one-to-one. If you take it out on purpose-
Right.
Then it's, then you get, then you get dained.
Well, okay.
So they should have pulled one back.
Right, we should have had a tree, and, and, you know, is it, is it a like-sized tree, I mean, you're obviously not gonna put in a 30-inch tree, but I mean, do you have something that, do we have something that says, you know, not a, a two-inch wisp that's going to be, get run over, no, we, you know, we should look at something that's going to have a little bit more stability, and, and they're, they're available, I mean, they are available. So I don't know, I mean, those are the things I'd like to talk about more.
Okay. Moving on to number three, or do you have any questions?
Yep.
Yeah, I like three, that's, that's good. What did you mean by C, investigate the development of a committee reporting structure?
That was Linda Orson actually brought that up, because she felt that, and, and if I remember correctly, and Dan, maybe you can help, it, it seemed to me that when Linda was chair, she felt that, that the planning commission was kind of out in the Netherlands, and felt that, that maybe the, maybe the reporting structure, if, if you call it reporting structure, traffic committees, and all these different committees that report to the City Commission, would, would come through the planning commission, and anyone that had to do with land use, am I correct? So that, so that the planning commission has some visibility, just what we're talking about, visibility into what's happening in traffic, what's happening with the natural, the nature-
So that's what she meant by-
That's what she meant by that, now, now, do we keep that or not, I, I mean, that, the way it's written, committee reporting structure, it kind of, I think when we first talked about it with the City Commission, they kind of went, oh, no, 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 you know, these people report to the City Commission by charter, they don't, they can't report to you, well, we don't want to report, we just want to have that relationship, and I think six addresses that, to some degree, but that's, that's where it came from.
And, and, you know, this goes under the bigger question, not that you guys want more committees and whatnot to sit on, but there is that disconnect, not only with urban renewal, but with PRAC, with Traffic Advisory Committee. You know, it, and not that they need to always respond directly to you, but, you know, if we're involved up front or made aware, you know, there are some issues that, you know, sometimes occasionally pop up, that may have been avoided, or there, you know, there's policies being made out of the Traffic Advisory Committee, that, you know, an impact of how we review applications.
Sure.
And, you know, sometimes we're not aware of them even, so, you know, while I don't necessarily know that it's like, you know, an umbrella, you know, you need to report to him, or reports to him, or reports to the PC, or whatnot, it seems like we're more laid out, a kind of a, across the board, everyone, there's some definition that could probably occur, but I'm not sure that we're necess, that the planning commission necessarily is the authority over these separate committees.
Nor do they want to be.
No.
It was always just to be a better communication, like, between.
So, so I'm not sure if C, you know, we might be addressing, in A and B, we might be addressing C, I'm not sure if C is really something that we're doing.
I agree. I, I like the work sessions that we have at the City Commission, and it seems that, you know, once a year, perhaps have a work session with PRAC, and once a year, have a work session with TAC, what's on your calendar. Because they meet once a month, I think PRAC meets the same nights we meet, and so-
Yeah, we'd almost have to, it'd have to be a special-
Have to coordinate something.
Yeah, a special meeting where we just, you know-
Well, and we've done it, we've done it with the Stark Review Board, for example.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I, I think rather than trying to develop a hierarchical reporting relationship, or, or, is that what it's called, the committee reporting structure, that-
Yeah, that, no, that's-
If we could meet once a year to review-
How about a committee communication structure?
Well, I think, I think we just said that in B.
Just kill it, yeah.
I think it fits under number six, you know.
It's under three and six, three, B and six.
Yeah, of course, yeah, it's fine, three, don't need that.
I like it.
Moving on.
Now, so we needed someone to actually develop something this year. Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be a good start.
We're all set up?
We're all set up with no one to give it to.
If we could get these architects, you know, to come back in from their vacation, it would be fine.
And the incentives program, you know, I really, you know, I, I really think this is something we could expand, it's just, we're in such a bad financial situation, you know, we need to have those conversations with Nancy Kay, and see, you know, and, and make sure they're worthy, you know, I mean, what are we really trying to achieve? And I think if we start there, and then kind of work backwards, and I know you'll, you know, I think this is funny, but if, you know, if we can get someone through the process in 45 days instead of 110, you know, that is saving them money, and it's getting them moving forward, and it's a small gesture, you know, I, I just, I'm a little weary, knowing we just increased our transportation SDCs, you know, from 17, 1400 to $8,000, because there is a, there is a need in this city to address our transportation system, so you hate to give it away, you know, unless it's very specific, you know, it's a mixed-use development in downtown, where we want residential over office or retail, and we know we're gonna reduce trips. Now, I'm not sure that a mixed-use development out on Leland Road is really gonna do that, you're still gonna have the trips.
Exactly.
You know, so if we're, if we're gonna do it, I think it needs to be very specific and tailored to specific projects that we want, you know, the timing aspect of, you know, getting something through quicker isn't that big deal, but if you're actually giving away money-
Now, you're confusing what you want, and, and what is innovation, and I, I'd be really, and be kind of tough to define innovative, and, and I, I just wondered how, how, how is the city gonna evaluate that, or is that something we're gonna-
That's something we would have to do, yeah, we would, I mean, you know, we, we had this discussion about green streets, you know, we're really pushing these green street designs, and using urban, you know, the swales, but the problem is, you've still gotta put the pipes in, still a redundant system, so I'm a little worried that in the end, it's gonna cost us more money, because we're maintaining not only the landscaping, but the piping as well, but there is a benefit, there are, there is obviously a benefit to being able to treat your water above ground, you know, potentially, you're having some of that water, you know, percolate back into the water table, and there are definitely benefits. Now, is it something where it's cheaper for us to do? I'm not sure, we're all there yet, so then you give an SDC credit for that, of which it costs you more money to maintain-
Right.
-over the long haul, you know, these are things, these are just serious questions, you, everyone thinks, oh, they're doing a lead building, it's gonna be cheaper, so let's give them credit, I'm not sure everyone's there yet, and we would have to do a little bit of work on that.
Well, that's why it says investigate.
Yes.
I mean, it may be, it may not be worthwhile, but at least, it's something to, I mean, to get the, the discussion started, and I, I think that's, I think that's a good thing.
And while, you know, in lead, there, there are definite benefits to the building owner, in terms of energy conservation, but I'm not necessarily sure what the benefits to the public system are.
Even in terms of street design, there's, I think in Germany, they have this notion of free space, where you, you don't have curbs and sidewalks, and a stripe on the street, you have, you have a, a brick-
A big mix.
Yeah, you know, a, a set of bricks, you know, all at the same level, and maybe you got some planters, and you have, you have low-speed limits, and you, the, the circulation pattern is such that cars shouldn't want to go through there anyway.
It's almost painful to drive through there.
Yeah, and, I mean, that, that's innovative, and I think, I don't know if that costs more or less money than it would, it would cost to put in a concrete sidewalk, and, and the paved street, and to maintain all of that, but I, it's, it's certainly worth investigating, I think.
Well, and that's the, who, who says incentive has to be dollar-related?
That's just right.
I mean, incentive could be, just like you said, I mean, it could be a benefit to them by, by, by the way they design the, the space, we could look at, like we did with the current area, where if you, if you don't build a snout-nose garage, and you put it back, we're, we're gonna allow you these things, and if you, you know, we, we could, that's, that's an incentive, I mean, it doesn't have to be financial all the time.
One other thing we talked about was trying to encourage people to be more environmentally friendly, and we don't have anything in the code that really, can that be included with innovative and environmentally friendly, or lead standard, working towards lead certification or something like that? Just include that under innovative.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
Good. And I think number five, we were kind of, we wanted to, same thing, do an education on these neighborhood sub-area plans, how they work, what can you do with them, how do you implement them, you know, so if we can maybe get tailored, and like we were discussing, you know, Park Place kind of has that, you know, they've got certain design standards for their homes, and for their commercial areas, and, you know, is that something we want to do in other areas, or that we incorporate in?
Well, the benefit of this is that, I mean, I went to, and I probably already said this about Saturday, and we went to, I went to a NUSA, Neighborhood USA convention in Texas, where I spent a week, and I went through a presentation by a group that puts these, helps put these together, and these, some of the, they're, what's real impressive about them is they really bring the citizens in, and it gives them a feeling that, and it is not just a feeling, but it gives them the ability to design their own life-
Take ownership.
And, I mean, you talked about livability, it allows you to create your own livability, I mean, it allows you to create your own little piece of, of your city, and, and everything, all of the comp plans, all of the master planning, everything looks at that as a priority, and so it's, the, the city's plan goes to the neighborhood plan first, and will it work here, and if so, then it gets, gets planned, yeah. It was very impressive, some of the things that they were showing us in the, some of these east coast cities, and down in South, South, that they had put together, and, pretty, pretty impressive, pretty impressive, which, so I, that was kind of my thought, is why don't we, you know, let's, let's educate ourselves on, on those types of neighborhood plans, I would, I mean, it'd be great to have sent somebody to NUSA and be able to go through that, but, you know, I, I think it'd be, be nice to be able to have a discussion, maybe do some research, and see if there's a speaker, or somebody that could come and talk to us about neighborhood plans, and the importance they are in developing a city.
Or, or not just a, a venue with the, with the planning commissioners, but, you know, invite, you know, the, the city, or even-
The neighborhood associations, the city commission.
Exactly, yeah, and, and, you know, put it in a larger venue, and-
Because neighborhood, that's, that's the priority for the, for, you know, our neighborhood, or for our, I just lost the, the-
CIC.
Yeah, CIC, I mean, that's really the priority for the CIC, is, is education, and if, I'm sure they'd be thrilled to be able to participate in that, and be able to have a little bit of, and that's, you know, one of the big concerns, and get off the soapbox, but one of the big concerns that the neighborhoods have is they, if they don't have an issue, they don't meet, and then if they don't meet, they have no, they have no control. Well, you know what, if you have, if you have a planning process for your city, for your community, for your neighborhood, all of a sudden, you got a reason to meet, and if you can create a neighborhood plan, and, and bring that to the planning commission, and we review it, and say, it's a good plan, it may be a 20-year plan, but why not do a master plan for neighborhoods, just like you do a master plan for a hospital, or, or something like that? And that's kind of my vision, is how I'd like to see, long-term.
And then, increase education and communication, Planning Commission, we're talking about, you know, these 101s with our attorney, our transportation planners, and then regular updates, get you some updates from, you know, city manager can come in and talk about urban renewal, or economic development, or, you know, obviously Nancy could come in and talk about infrastructure, transportation, water, sanitary. And then the neighborhood associations, we had talked about trying to maybe, you know, incorporate some of their meeting times, running it, you know, with our planning commission commercial, at the beginning or an end of a meeting, maybe just a, something that scrolls by saying when they're meeting, try and incorporate that, just to get the word out, to get folks involved in their neighborhood associations. And then, obviously, and Oregon City School Districts, we'll work on that language.
So, I mean, did anybody, over the last two weeks, come up with any other ideas or thoughts?
I don't want to, actually, it's more, I'll throw it out for discussion first, and, and maybe even ask you, Tony, is promote and support public and private partnerships, particularly on development, I, I don't know, is that something that we, let me put it that way, is that something we do want to do? I would think so, right? I mean, I'm asking the others, but I think so, and then what do we do, what can we do to improve that?
Right.
And I think there's an educational component to it, I think that there's maybe an incentive, there's an incentive component to it.
I think we start with, because, yeah, you're gonna kind of have to think through, what can we do to promote that, at our level?
Exactly.
You know, because, you know, obviously, the developers' agreements happen at the City Commission level, where we get into those public-private partnerships, but, you know, to kind of identify, what are they out there, and how can we foster those, and what situations do we want to see them, so I think we've kind of got to start with, you know, what are they, what are all, what are all these options that we said have been utilized in other jurisdictions, and, you know, which ones of those are applicable in Oregon City, if any?
Yeah, it's a whole topic by itself, you know, well, yeah, not only, and then, how do you track which ones have been real successful in other communities, you know, like, boy, it's just opens up a whole, a whole world, but I think that's something that we want to develop as a city, and, you know, I'm not sure what we've actually done about that.
Right, and is it, is it more than, you know, urban renewal, you know, is it, what, what other avenues are there for these, these relationships, how do we support one another, you know, or what can we offer to the private side to, to foster development that we want?
Well, you know, traditionally, it's been driven by the developer, when they feel like they're not, they're not, it's not coming around for them, they'll come up with an idea, and it, which is fine, one of the, a good example is the South End Pump Station. You know, five developers got together and put that in, because, because not one of them, not, not one of the, the properties would work, and they said, okay, well, we're gonna give up the land, we're gonna put in the pump station, we're gonna pay for it, and then you can pay us back through SDCs, and it was, it was a great plan, and we now have a, a pump station down there that can support much more growth, and it supported that whole area, and that was driven by a developer, it was one, one of the developers came and said, hey, to the city commission, said, well, here's what, here's what I'd like to do, what do you guys think about it, and it cost the city a dime, so it was a great program, and it was a great partnership, a great relationship, we need more of that, I agree with Dan, but how do you, how do you get about it?
Yeah, and maybe another bullet point for this one is, you know, and then how does, how do you tie in promoting and supporting of public and private partnerships for development into, you know, the economic development portion of it, how do you tie it into urban renewal development? Would the downtown Oregon City people have, have any help with an idea like that?
I think we'd have to, yeah, kind of see who's doing what right now, you know, we've got the Main Street program going on down there-
That's what I meant, the Main Street program.
Yeah, you know, and obviously, you have, you know, Chamber down there, you know, is, you know, is that where we kind of start this synergy of, is there anything we can do to foster, what, you know, what do you need? You know, I guess is probably the question you start with, how can we help you?
Well, the fact that we're open to it is, is the first place, I mean, the fact that we're, we're interested in developing this relationship with developers, and let them be aware that we are, and, you know, we, we have a group of developers that have worked very closely with us, and let them know that, hey, you know, and you see a lot of you seeing a log before we see it, you know, when you're looking at an area.
So I think it's kind of getting your, getting our hands around who's doing what right now, and, you know, are there ways we can support what they're doing, if we think it's appropriate, so I think it's probably where we start, because obviously, we do have, you know, programs going on right now, you know, they're all kind of independent one another. they're all kind of independent, one another.
Oh, it's a good, a good suggestion, Dan. Any others?
I have, uh, one, one pet idea, the International Dark Sky Association recently, uh, closed the comment period on their, uh, model code ordinance for, uh, for dark sky lighting, and it's a, it's a code that's, um, kind of an overlay-based code, and in, in terms of, uh, of Oregon City, and the southern edge of, of the, you know, urban metro area, we have pretty nice dark sky views to the south. The views to the north are pretty washed out, but we still have good dark skies.
And you still have the observatory at the college.
Yeah, so, um, you know, may, perhaps it fits as the next, um, you know, letter F under number two, to review that, and, when it's released.
Okay.
And to see how it might fit into Oregon City.
It's a good idea, long-term approach, and I could definitely see wanting to incorporate that into it, a minimum, the Beaver Creek Concept Plan area, being so close to the Blackman's Community College.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But it, it amazes me, we still have that.
'Cause I think we can, you know, we've got a, you know, our, our code really talks about, you know, limiting foot candles at the property line, it does have some measurements in there for minimum and maximum lighting, but we're, we're kind of silent on, you know, full cutoff, uh, closures, you know, pointing light upward, you know, some basic things that we could probably address that would-
PGE does not help much.
Really?
Yeah, in, in, in that, there is so much more that PGE can do, but they, apparently, they don't have the resources, or the interest to, to really offer the, the spectrum of, of luminaries that they could be providing, it's a very limited set.
And it would be interesting to, and not to, 'cause I've been thinking about this one, too, 'cause we had originally started with this, international dark skies, and it, we walked around, just 'cause it was such a big jump from what we had before, and, um, I think it was a lost opportunity, um, but, you know, another one would be just street lighting.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it'd be worth getting Nancy in here to talk about street lighting of our public streets, you know, if we can increase our spacing standard, or is there a better way to do it? Um, not only, in my opinion, are, you've got quite a bit of light pollution from those streetlights, um, there's a lot of them, and they are very expensive to maintain and run, uh, so there's all kinds of benefits, I think, but, you know, it's a larger question, you know, there's that perception of all that light is necessary for a safe street, so, you know, you've got to, you've got to address that issue as well, that concern, it's a legitimate concern, um, but, you know, streets have done it before, where you, you know, you've got the corner, you've got mid-block, and you've got the corner, and with a, with a dimmer light, and, you know, one of the big things with lighting is that if it's very bright, coming out of one, it creates those, those light-to-dark contrasts, your eye can't adjust too fast enough at night. And if you actually use a, a softer light, that, that, that difference between the light and the dark is much, much easier to see through. So, while it's, it's almost counterintuitive that with less light, you can see better, in essence, or more safe, 'cause you can see, versus this bright spotlight, of which you can't see outside the ring, because there's such a difference in the lighting.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
Got you, too. Good idea. Any others? I'm sure Dunn didn't get the opportunity to think it through very much, but we're not gonna, we'll continue on, so, yeah, if it comes forward. Thanks for putting that together.
Sure, yeah, so we'll work on cleaning it up some more, and, you know, obviously, we'll meet again, and we'll be able to add more, tweak it some more, next time.
Good deal.
All right.
Any other questions or anything?
So, no meeting, next one is, would have been Memorial Day, so, we're not meeting on Memorial Day, so the next one is that June meeting that we continued the Public Works Master Plan to.
Okay. Sounds good.
All righty.
We earned, thank you very much.